We honor this evening. Our former student from West High, Mo Szed, he had been missing since the end of October and was found this past week. And our thoughts and prayers are with he and his family. So with that, a moment of silence this evening. Thank you. Thank you. And I would like to read the arrangement information that was given to us by the family. The family of Mo Szed is inviting members of the community to join them in celebrating his life and laying him to rest. Visitation for the West High student will be at the Waterloo First United Methodist Church, 614 Randolph Street, on Mo's birthday, Sunday, December 20th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. The funeral will be 10:30 a.m. on Monday, December 21st, at First Baptist Church of Waterloo, 434 Baltimore Street. Anyone who would like to help the family pay funeral costs can donate through Veridian Credit Union. Go to any Veridian location near you or call 319-236-5600 to donate. And when you call, simply say that you would like to donate to the Mo Szed benefit. There's also an account number, and this information will be up on our Waterloo Schools' website. It's already on there, actually. So if you want any further information on that, you can go there to obtain it. And now will you please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now Lyle Schmidt will read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools' community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thanks, Lyle. And now I'd like to welcome Kristal Buzza forward. We have a donation this evening of hats, gloves, and scarves. So we've got some folks here to present to us.
Thank you. Every year since I've been at the district, we have been so blessed when we come to these colder months of getting some supplies for our students that are greatly needed. And so tonight I have two groups with me. One group is the Young Professionals Network, that is with the Board of Realtors, and then the Kiwanis Club. And I'm going to just have them introduce themselves and kind of talk a little bit on their projects. They both have a unique take on their project, and we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Krista. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm with Easy Risers Kiwanis Club of Waterloo. We meet every Wednesday morning at 7:00 at the Urborn Clubhouse. It has been a service club that has been established since the early '80s. My name, again, is Christine Hirsch. I am currently the secretary. We are a small club. It used to be large, but like so many service clubs, they have diminished in size. But we're a hard-working club, and we're fun. We do have a good time, and I think Krista will agree to that. Several years ago, it was brought to our attention of the need for hats, mittens, and gloves for children. We understand that they're not allowed to go out to recess without worn clothing, and so many children come to school without that, either by their own negligence or their parents, and it doesn't matter whose negligence it is. But we want them to go outside and have a good time. So several years ago, at least six years ago, we decided to appropriate some of our funds that we accumulate over the year. And again, we are a small club, so we have fundraisers such as Pancake Breakfast, bussing at the Pizza Ranch. We helped out with the airshow with the Noon Club and made some money there for a couple of years. Santa Calling, different projects that we have to raise funds. And of course, a lot of it comes out of our own pockets as well. So we have begun this, and we continue to hope to do this as the years go on, and it is our pleasure to be able to help these children. Thank you for having me here tonight.
Hi, I'm Ellie Fokes.
And I'm Mo Frost.
We're at the Northeast Iowa Regional Board of Realtors, formerly the Waterloo Cedar Falls Board of Realtors. And this is our fourth year for doing the hat and mittens drive, and we did it for much the same reason they did. You know, we thought it was kind of a fun fundraiser to put together, and there's a need in our community and at all the schools, it sounds like. So we've had fun doing it.
It was also a great way to engage other Realtors in this, and it's just fun to do. It's a good cause, and so...
We also have local lenders, abstract company, the title companies, they all get involved as well. And this year was the first year that we were able to expand it to outside communities since our board grew. So we had a few other communities. The Independent School District also did one for their area. Old Wine did one for their area, and we were able to donate to a few Cedar Falls schools as well. So it's definitely something that we've seen grow every year.
Excellent. Thank all of you, and please take back to your organizations how much we appreciate it. I will say that beyond just, I'm not a negligent parent, but it does happen every now and again that one of my three children might lose a glove or a scarf. And so I appreciate very much the fact that, and I know many of our buildings are, those things that you provide for us, they also lend them out to students who are maybe a little less forgetful, or more forgetful than some. So they definitely go to a good use, and they're very, very much appreciated. So thank you all very much. Photo break. Thank you all. And now we've come to the time in our agenda for information from individuals and delegations. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to address the board? If so, please come forward. Seeing no one, we will move on to our consent agenda. And this evening, it consists of the following items: the minutes of the November 23rd, 2015 regular board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, hour of code grant to Lowell Elementary, Irving Elementary fencing project, inter-district transportation agreement, a labor negotiations team, and appointment of a board member to the Blackhawk County Conference Board. Are there any items that board members would wish to have removed?
Item F, Foxtrot.
Item F.
And G, Gulf, please.
And G. Anything else?
Item E, please.
Item E. Excellent. So I'd like to get a motion on the table, then, for the consent agenda items, including items B, C, D, and H, and I, excuse me.
So moved.
And a second? Then all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with those five items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That brings us to item E on page 19, the Hour of Code Grant to Lowell Elementary. And that is on page 19 in our agenda, and I believe that we've got a few people here, Carrie and company, from Lowell Elementary to maybe give us a little bit, let me get this motion on the table, and then you guys can give us some background. The Board of Education accept the grant in the amount of $4,000 from Code Iowa Technology to Lowell Elementary for participation in the Hour of Code project. And a second?
Second.
Excellent. The floor is yours. Carrie, tell us all about it.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Heinzler, the principal from Lowell, and I brought Stephanie Peters. She's our media specialist and the writer of the grant for the Hour of Code. And so we were able, she was able to do most, all of the work that had to do with getting the grant. So I'm actually going to just turn it over to her and let her...
Great. That's awesome. Thanks, Stephanie. Come on up.
She said, "My name is Stephanie Peters." And I decided to sign Lowell up for the Hour of Code, which entailed having all of our students, kindergarten through fifth grade, participate in the last week, joining in the Hour of Code kind of movement, and getting them all involved in coding. And so they participated. And along with that, then, I signed up for the grant that went with it through the Iowa STEM with the governor's office. And then we were awarded that grant. With that grant comes the $4,000 that then we can use to purchase new technology to use towards any STEM-related activities that we can do through the media center with our students in kindergarten through fifth grade. So it's been really exciting. The coding has gone amazing. The kids are so engaged and actively involved in all things coding. They are asking how they can continue doing it at home. They are using it. They come back to me and say, "Oh, Mrs. Peters, I finished the lessons at home. What more can I do?" So it's been very exciting.
So this is software you would be purchasing with, is?
No, it's actually new technology. The code, code.org provides us free access to the coding programs that we are using in the classroom.
Okay. So the new technology is...
It can be any kind of computers, laptops, iPads. We haven't actually made a decision on what we're going to purchase at this point yet, so...
Okay.
Could you explain to us, for the board and those at home, exactly what the kids do when they code?
Sure. Yep. So right now during the Hour of Code, they have access to a couple of different types of coding. They can do Minecraft, Star Wars, or Frozen characters, and they are able to move those characters. And it's not the traditional game, like Minecraft game. They have to use blockly, which is blocks that they have to move, and they have to run programs. So they move the blocks, and then using those blocks, they have to run a program to make the character move from one position to another, depending on what the instructions tell them to do. So underneath the blocks is the JavaScript, which is the code. And so then I encourage the students to look at what that code is or that JavaScript is to see what it really looks like, what a computer scientist might be doing.
Thank you.
So all the K5 students are eligible to participate?
Yes, and they all have. Yep, all of the students, all 360 Lowell students have been participating.
Great job. I'd like to come play.
That would be fantastic. All of the teachers that have seen it done have asked for accounts or how they can get on. Code.org, it's all free. Yep, anything you can get on and try, it's all free.
I think maybe the newer members might not remember this, but it seems to me like two years ago, we had, there's another, at least one building, if not more, buildings that are doing this as well, and they came and the kids did a simulation. Does anybody remember that? And we, yeah. I remember not wanting to go on with the board meeting because I just wanted to continue with the coding, so it was very fun.
That's, that's how excited the kids are. And I tell them, "Okay, it's time for us to sign out and stop." They don't want to, so...
They don't want to, right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Have fun with the $4,000. Let us know what you decide, and maybe you can come back with some kids and show us. We'd love that. That'd be great. Thanks. Did we vote on that? We did not. There we go. All right. Well, then, all those in favor of approving the Hour of Code grant to Lowell Elementary, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. You're safe. You're good. Thanks. The next item on our agenda, then, is item F on page 21. You all note that you have a different exhibit this evening. The one that we included was not correct, so we have the new one in place here. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept the original recommendation from Structure Architecture and approve the quote received from Miller Fencing of Waterloo, Iowa, dated September 15th, 2015, for the Irving Fencing Project in the amount of $70,578.81.
Except for that, it's September 21st.
Oh, 21, excuse me.
No, you're fine.
September 21st. I said 15.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And discussion.
I just wanted to comment, I think we ended up in the right place on this, and with the right process, the number didn't end up changing, but from fiduciary responsibility in terms of the community, we now have solid information to know the value compared to other alternatives. So appreciate everybody's extra work on this, but I'm pleased, and I think we got the process right in the end.
Agreed. And I think it's worth noting, for those of us who aren't facilities, we've seen this, but we did receive, we looked at full-price fencing options. There were three more that we looked at. And so I really do agree with you, Lyle, that we had a good comparison of which to go by and approve.
And just a further comment, that legally, we wouldn't have had to do this, but because it's, you know, anything less than $100,000, but our standard can be a little more strict than what's legally required, and that's why we took the action we did.
Absolutely. Anything further?
I guess, could you explain a little bit about the fencing? I guess I don't see anything that shows where the fencing is going or the purpose of the fencing.
I'm going to invite Dan Channer from Structure Architects up to answer that question. Good evening, Dan.
Hello. The fencing goes around the east side of Irving, around that existing playground. It's essentially where the existing fence is at. We're simply pulling that out, replacing it with this fence that matches what we had around Becker. It's also what is at Kidro, not Kidro.
Kingsley.
Kingsley. Thank you. It also goes around to the west side of the building, and it creates basically an enclosure for the entire playground area.
So correct me if I'm wrong, it's currently like just a chain link fence?
Correct.
And this will be, the purpose being higher, bigger?
It's two feet high. It's two feet higher, and more of an ornamental type fence versus a strictly chain link.
And we already own the fence. We're, so we're reusing a lot of it that we've got in storage, so...
And what will happen to the other fence that gets removed? Will that just become part of our stockpile, then? Or will it be...
We did not specifically tell them what to do with that.
I don't know if we can re, I don't know if it can be reused when it's pulled out.
Typically, the poles are pretty well...
Yeah.
Destroyed.
Scrunched.
But we should salvage what we can. The wire should be...
If you would like, I can request that.
That'd be great.
But the other feature, though, is, is it not true that there won't be open gates? There'll be ability to totally enclose?
Correct.
And when is this, when is the fencing going to be done?
It would, if the weather holds, doesn't freeze, saturating. And the new pieces get here, since we are going to now reuse some, you may be able to just go ahead and get started. It depends on the weather now.
So, I mean, but I'm, so my question, reason for my question, is it going to be when kids would be needing to use the equipment, or are they already not doing outside recess?
It would be done, it could potentially be done while the students are there.
It shouldn't affect recess, is what we were...
No.
And if it does, we would just work around that by using the other existing areas, so we do that on occasion. Good question.
Anything further for Dan? Thanks, Dan. We appreciate it. Then all those in favor of approving the Irving Elementary fencing project, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. The next item on our agenda, then, is item G, the inter-district transportation agreement. It is item G on page 23.
I move the Board of Education approve the submission of the inter-district transportation agreement to AEA 267.
Can I get somebody to approve that? And a second?
Second.
Thank you. That's what I meant. A second. Great. And discussion.
If I'm reading this correctly, I think we have reciprocity with Cedar Falls now on this?
We do. They changed theirs to match our permission level, whether we need it or not. They were willing to just put that on there, so... And Dyke New Hartford did the same.
And then the only question that remains is, on the Cedar, on page, I don't know, the AEA routes traveled, the last page of this item, I believe, yeah. The two yellow bus, the Cedar Falls, I can't determine whether any of those boxes are checked.
They're all checked, C.
C is checked?
Yep.
Okay. That's all I needed. Just make sure we...
Is that a very good copy?
No. They all look gray.
Make sure we had permission to go into those areas.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Great. Then all those in favor of approving the inter-district transportation agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That concludes our consent agenda, then, for this evening, and takes us on to board policy changes. Item J on page 34. And I believe that Tara Thomas is here this evening. But the recommended motion is, the board approve the following policies: athletic transfers rules and gifts to the district.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Awesome. Tara.
Thank you, Chanley. So these are just the second, or the second reading of these two proposed changes. One, to add in some language to that athletic transfer rule, that would reflect IASB policy language. And the second was, in addition to the gift policy, that would better streamline the process.
Does anyone have any questions about either of these policies? Pretty self-explanatory. All right. Then seeing none, all those in favor of approving the board policy changes 510.5 and 701.9, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is item K on page 41, the resolution ordering a special election on the issuance of $47 million general obligation school bond. And the recommended motion is, the Board of Education approve the resolution ordering a special election to be held on February 2nd, 2016, on the issuance of $47 million genuine obligation school bonds for the purpose of funding a career center and renovations to East and West High Schools.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Excellent. And before I turn this over to Dr. Lindeman, I just want to back up a little bit for our viewers at home and kind of go through where we are to get us to this point this evening. So back in early October, the board heard from a task force, we've actually had multiple task forces, but the most recent one is the High School Reform Steering Committee, and they laid out a series of recommendations, including a career and tech ed center located near Central Middle School, and also $6 million worth of renovations to both East and West High Schools. And then on November 9th, the board approved petition language and began to gather signatures for a bond issue. And I am going to actually read the language of that at this point. And it is, shall the Board of Directors of the Waterloo Community School District in the county of Blackhawk, state of Iowa, be authorized to contract indebtedness and issue general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $47 million to provide funds to construct, build, improve, furnish, and equip a new career technical education building to improve the site and to remodel, repair, improve, furnish, and equip the East and West High School buildings, including, but not limited to, installation of air conditioning systems, lighting, and electrical improvements, window replacement, tuck pointing, and masonry veneer, veneer improvements, and to improve those sites. So with that, a very avid group of folks set out to collect signatures. We needed approximately 357 signatures. That's a portion of the people who voted in the last school election, which was September 8th of 2015. So we needed a minimum of 357 signatures, and tonight I am happy to report that over 500, in fact, 512 signatures have been collected in support of this referendum. And so with that tonight, we are hoping that we will move forward and vote on setting a special election date for February 2nd of 2016 to continue our exciting work in this area. So with that, I can turn it over to Dr. Lindeman, and I know that some board members probably have comment as well.
Sure. I would just make, just a, just a couple comments, because I think you've said, you know, the majority of the important facts. Just a reminder, all along the committees that have been working on this for three and a half years, really, that it was a twofold purpose to do what was best for students, but what was also supported by the community. And so I think the, you know, the 500 signatures, which were not, you know, evidently, I didn't do part of that process, but the people who did obtain the signatures really, really said that people were very, very supportive and very happy to sign the petition. I would, just for the public, I would mention that there are, a reminder that by law, that there are four dates each year when a bond can be voted on. And in 2016, those dates are in February, April, September, and November. And so I think that, you know, probably we should talk a little bit about why February was chosen in the, in the recommendation. And in the meantime, you know, we've really been, been sharing the message and really garnering quite a bit of support for this initiative, and I know there are a lot of people working on that. So, you know, what questions and discussion would you like to bring forward at this time?
Anybody? You want me to read that again, don't you? You couldn't get enough.
I guess I'll, I'll comment first. So as Jane just said, after several years of investigation, we're ready now with a specific proposal to go to the community to really improve the quality of education of the Waterloo District. We're not where we need to be in terms of meeting the mission statement up here because our graduation rate is, is too low, and our students are not as ready as we would like them for continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to the community. So what we're really doing here is asking the citizens of Waterloo, the school district, for an opportunity to dramatically expand the amount of applied learning, or hands-on learning, if you will. That's what these years of investigation have, have revealed, that we think that's our best prospect towards improving the quality of education. So the benefit is not only a better understanding of the basics of math and science and language through applied learning, but inherently, then, a proficiency, a level of proficiency in any other 30 career paths. So it's kind of a, you know, double benefit. You get more solid, basic understanding of math, science, and language, and at the same time, you get some qualifiers and understanding of what the different careers are. So we feel that most students, especially those that maybe don't do as, have, are not doing as well in traditional-type learning settings, but I think what we've seen in all our travels and investigation is that the ones that are doing traditionally well do even better with, with some applied learning. So it really applies to all students. I think it's, you know, a gateway for opportunity for all careers, and is the best single thing we can do at this point to, again, go back to the mission statement, do exactly what our mission statement is calling for. So this opportunity to offer a broader array of, of learning styles to students should benefit not only the students, but then in turn, the community and... benefit not only the students, but then in turn, the community and, and society at large. I think it's, it's a great proposal, and we're asking for the community's support on it.
Excellent.
I think piggybacking on what Lyle said is, what is the most intriguing to me is that it presents another option. And we have the IB programs, we have AP programs, and now this will present another option for students of all different levels, that can, I've heard and talked to students who actually, in New Jersey and Delaware, took the cosmetology program to pay their way through college. They got a license, and they could pay their way through college. So, it's an asset for all kids, and it provides another option, that there aren't any other districts around here that are providing that option, and we have a perfect piggyback match with Hawkeye Community College, Allen Nursing School, we have so many venues that fit right into a lot of the career paths that we're looking at, and I just, I just think we're on the forefront of this, and I just hope that the community will support, and if you have questions, as when I was getting some signatures, and Angela concurred that, you know, some people in the community have questions, well, that's a lot of money. Well, but if you want to know exactly what that forty-seven million will go, that's on the website, we have information, it also will upgrade East and West High and give them air conditioning. I think that's fair to our students. Every other school in our district has air conditioning, but East and West High do not. So, besides that, it will upgrade our facilities and upgrade our programming. So I just think that if you have questions, please ask, because we have answers, and maybe they're answers that you don't think are good, but ask and get the answer, and we will, we will listen to your opinion. And so I just think that it's a great thing for our community, for our kids, and I just, as they were talking about the K to five-year-olds learning coding, and I thought, boy, they're that interactive in K to five on computers, and then we think traditionally they need to be in a high school setting, that they sit and listen to a lecture. I, I just thought, we have to do this kind of education to keep our kids engaged, and I just think it's a wonderful option, so.
Thanks. Anyone else?
I think they said it well. I don't think.
I want to just piggyback quickly on, I was at a meeting today, and similarly, I've heard a lot of people, as I've been in the community, talking about this, talking about signatures. I heard somebody today say, could we just get on with this already? I'm so excited, and this was, you know, a business owner here in the community. So we definitely have a lot of support from that area, and I do think it's exciting to look at a February timeline for this, for a couple of reasons. One being, it is time, we've been at this for three-and-a-half years. Secondly, I believe it allows us the flexibility as a board to make some decisions this spring, as we're looking at our budget, and hopefully the legislature's going to come along with us and give us a, give us what we have for supplemental state aid, a little earlier than normal, but in order for us to keep this property tax neutral, I think the more time we have this spring to do that, the better. And I feel real good about that. I also like the idea of, if we can pass this in February, then it gives us time, we can actually start some of these improvements to our buildings, you know, this summer, and be, and be ready to go. So, our kids shouldn't have to wait any longer for this kind of delivery. I think it's a super exciting time, and I think it's innovative, and I think our community's ready. So, I, I say hear, hear myself.
Traditionally, I think Waterloo District has had students open and rolling out of our district to other, other districts, and I think this is an opportunity to turn those tables, and I can see in the future, students coming to Waterloo to take advantage of these opportunities and career choices, and, and not even, not only that, but possibly come in during part of the day from their district to take classes in, in this career technical education center, and it would actually benefit both our district to help support that program, and also to help those students from the other districts who don't, wouldn't normally get that opportunity to take advantage of it. I think we're still working on the curriculum, that is something that's going to take some additional time. We have time during the construction phase to continue to, to work on that curriculum, and so when the building is complete, we are ready to go with, with those classes and those teachers to prepare students in, in those areas.
Just a note, following Shanley's, the proposal itself does not and cannot address the tax-neutral issue. So it is a property tax increase. It's separate action by the board that's anticipated to neutralize that property tax increase, and again, if, if you missed it, the February vote will allow us to do that, so that everything lines up.
Absolutely. Thanks, Todd.
And we'll also have discussions between now and February as to how that will happen, so that those voting have an idea of, of how we're going to collect additional taxes to pay for this, so it's not all in property taxes.
Absolutely. So anything further? With that, this is a roll call vote this evening, so I'm just gonna, I'm going to go down the line and ask. So with that, all those in favor of approving the resolution for a special election on the issuance of forty-seven million dollars in general obligation school bonds, please signify by saying aye. Jesse Knight?
Aye.
Angela Weakley?
Aye.
Sue Flynn?
Aye.
Ron McCrina?
Aye.
Mike Kinsey?
Aye.
Lyle Schmidt?
Aye.
Shanley McNally?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. We'll get to work. Well, that concludes the action items on our agenda this evening, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Lindeman then for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. You know, what, what an exciting time. I can't help but listen to the seven people say aye to that, and think, it seems easy up here right now to have a, you know, to have a vote and, and to do that, it's a, you know, ten-second action, which really represents almost four years of work. And so, you know, I, I think it's, it is just immeasurably exciting to have that vote happen. So each, with each vote, I think it, it just becomes more, you know, closer to reality. So that is, that is very exciting. You know, in the meantime, we are, you know, we're doing a lot behind the scenes to make sure that people understand the message. I would, you know, certainly wish to give appreciation to Andrew Wind and his, I hope he's writing that down, he just wrote his name. You know, to, to recognize the article that was in the paper, I thought it was, it was fair, I thought it was informative, I thought it was, had, had multiple perspectives, and it was just a, it's just a one way that we get the message out. In addition to that, you know, we're, we're working with, Crystal and I have been really pounding the pavement, visiting with, we just came recently from, just, just a half-hour ago, from Farm Bureau, from their board meeting, and had the opportunity to share the information with them, John Deere, Tyson, Isle, and, and community members. We've had, you know, hundreds of people come in and, and hear the message, and it's just so broadly supported, which is just fantastic. So we're really, really appreciative of that. We will continue to do that, to do our due diligence. I would urge anyone who has questions to make sure that you first check our website. We are putting more on our website every single day. One of the things that has been kind of a hot, hot interest area would be the frequently asked questions that are uploaded, and we'll keep adding to that as more people ask questions. I don't think we've added anything recently, because we haven't necessarily had a new question recently, but we will certainly answer those. I think it's, Tara, is it a seven-page document? It's a pretty, pretty lengthy document. And so we'll just, we'll keep at that. The operational cost, which has been a question, you know, how much will it cost to run this once we get it, is, is available. So, there's, we are completely committed to transparency throughout this whole process, so we will absolutely put information up on the website, and I would encourage everybody to, to check that out. I also just wanted to, to send condolences to the family of Mo Sed. I appreciated the, the moment of silence in his honor and the, the reading of the information, and I know many of us will be going to that, and it's been, you know, it's just, it's just heart-wrenching to know that a family is going through something like that, and so our hearts go out to them. I thought that Tara's department put an amazing piece on the web, which gave information about Burmese families and cultural differences, and, and really gave people an insight on, on how to help, and maybe to, to eliminate some of the questions that could come with that. So I thought that was really well done. So thank you, Tara, for doing that, and, and just, we're, we're thinking of, of Mo Sed's family and, and friends, so. And with that, I just, I guess this is our, our last meeting before the, the holidays, and so I would wish people a Merry Christmas, a Happy Holiday, and, and enjoy the time, and keep reading, keep working. We've got, we've got a few days of school left, and then we have a nice, long break, so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to go over here to my left, and I'm going to start with Sue Flynn. What the heck? I'm going to mix it up tonight. I know.
I also wanted to add on to what Jane said, too, and, and just be thinking of Mo's teachers and classmates that sat in class with him, and he's not there anymore, and especially to the Wagner sisters, who poured their heart and soul into the efforts for him, and other people, too, but I just know specifically, they worked very, very hard on this, and, and it hit them very hard. So, remember them also, and, and his classmates, kids that sat right by him, because it's difficult to know that that person will never come back, you know, so. And then also, I just wanted to reiterate what Jane said, too, as far as the questions you have regarding the Career Tech Center, we are open to them, and, and I have served on the committees from the four years back, and have walked the process, and I think Lyle was on it, too. And I think things have very much been explored, when there's been some dissension, or some people that had different opinions, they were looked at, and they were incorporated in our plan. And so I think that all avenues were included in this, all businesses, we had lots of business input, and, and it just was a process that was very open, transparent, and inclusive. So I just want to continue that, and if you have questions or suggestions, please let Jane know, Crystal know, call the helpline, and Tara will get, or what's the line called? Not helpline, but...
School Talk?
School Talk, helpline, helpline, Tara's the helpline. But, but, so just, you know, we just really, really want the public to ask questions, and we want the public to, to be on board with this, and if there's something that they see wrong, or, or very blazingly that we're overlooking, we'd like to know that. And so, we do appreciate input, and it's, it, it just helps our process be stronger. So, I would encourage that also, and then just want to wish the kids Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, because when you come back, it'll be two thousand and sixteen.
Thanks, Sue. Angela?
So just, I guess I, I, I thought of some comments around the, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, drew a complete blank, high school reform, and that I started the process of becoming a board member, not even thinking I would ever become a board member, as part of that committee, the High School Task Force is the first portion of it, and I can definitely say that the portions that I was able to be a part of, the community voice was, was heard, because those who heard the three, the three plans, those were three plans that were offered from the committees, and then voted on, on those, on, on a separate committee, and all the voices were heard. I mean, we had several meetings and said, here's the three plans, they're not necessarily, then it wasn't the one that the school board chose, or the teachers chose, or the school district chose, it's the one that the community chose, and it is the, the community's voice. So it's not something different, there's nothing hidden. The, the choice of repairing the two high schools that we have, which have rich history, and then opening the Career and Technical Center, it's near Central Middle School, that was what the community, community wanted, and that's why we're moving forward with that direction. So, I think that that is really important, and kind of a misconception that there was some of these other plans, and that we were pushing towards one or the other, it was a community's voice that needed to be heard. The other thing that I would like to say is, I'm going to go with Happy Holidays. At my house, we do celebrate Christmas, so Merry Christmas to those who celebrate that. I, I know that Hanukkah is wrapping up right around either today or yesterday, so Happy Hanukkah to those who celebrate that, and I know that there's a huge celebration that happens right at the beginning of the New Year's for our Bosnian community, and so, you know, just Happy Holidays, and from the inclusion person at Veridian, I hope that everybody celebrates safely, and students who are preparing for finals, don't forget, you can have time over Christmas break to work on that.
I mean, holiday break.
Thanks, Angela. Jesse?
Okay, well, I'm going to go a different route this week. I'm going to congratulate the East High Wrestling Team, I think they have started the season when their first three duel meets, and anybody been around wrestling community for a while, as program went through the lot, losing Coach Gadsden, and at one time, they were more open weights and wrestlers on the squad, unfortunately, and it's a historic program as well, both East and Western Wrestling, but seeing the East come back and, you know, field duel teams and pick up some early-season wins, congratulations to their coaching staff and supporters of that program.
You want to talk about Battle of Waterloo while you're at it?
Battle of Waterloo.
Speaking of wrestling, come on, Jesse.
Friday, Saturday, best wrestling tournament in state Iowa, outside the Harvard State Tournament, thirty-two teams, and we should see some of the best action Saturday night, anybody can make it, so.
Jesse, do you still need volunteers?
I personally could probably use a couple more for the tables I'm working, because I won't be able to be there Saturday night, unfortunately, but I'm sure that any of the staff that work on it, that, you know, people show up, they can use them somewhere, whereas working with food, tickets, just any things to help keep the other teams and our fans and visitors here.
Comfortable.
Yes.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
And I would just add, I know my time is over, but I want exercise one more. I know that a couple years ago, the Battle of Waterloo, I believe, was the tourist event of the, of the Cedar Valley of the year, and so, and I've been there multiple times, and it is an amazing event. I'm actually from a wrestling family, so I have some, some fun watching the great wrestling, but really, seriously, it is a great event for the Cedar Valley. It brings much, much economy growth to the, to the Cedar Valley, so it's a great event. Get out there and go.
Before you go to the other side, can I say one more thing, too?
Yes.
I just want to say that history was made by one of my former classmates, and we had a wonderful East High grad in Quinton Hart being elected, elected mayor, and the most important thing that he would like to stress is not only, he is the first black mayor of Waterloo, but that's not what he wants people to know. He is striving to be the best mayor of Waterloo, so, super excited, I'm a little biased, because I was on the committee, but...
It's all good. Okay, Rhonda? Unless this side's got something else to add. Okay, I think we're good.
I just want to personally offer my condolences to Mo Sed's family, and as well as his classmates and his educators. And I want to strongly encourage the community, the parents, to take advantage of our very capable counseling staff, because this is also a very critical moment for young people to understand the process of death and dying and grieving. And Tara, I want to also commend you for the write-up that you did, and I, I thought it was very much a teachable moment, very educational, to allow the community to understand the differences in, in how we process grief. So I just really want to stress to the parents to encourage their, their sons and daughters to take advantage of the critical response opportunities at their respective schools, and especially this time of year. So as a counselor, I think it is very important, so for parents who need help explaining the grieving process, I, I think you should definitely work with your, your building counselor, so that's very important. And Happy Holidays.
Thank you. Mike?
I just wanted to let the viewers know that we're, staff and, and Facilities Committee, the administration, are all going to continue to work on, on the CTE program, whether it passes the bond or not, we're moving forward with several of these career technical programs. It would be, I think, much easier for the, the community and the, and the district to provide these opportunities for our students with passing this bond, but it's not going to stop the process that we have getting started here. We'll be looking at the architects in the coming weeks, as to specifically what we're going to do with or without the, the funds available, but really would stress those who are, who are in favor of this to... who are, who are in favor of this to spread the word, and those who are opposed to voice those opinions so that we can clarify any, and correct any errors. With that, Happy Holidays.
Thanks, Mike. Lyle?
Yeah, it's great to have taken a short but significant step tonight towards a, a great new CTE opportunity for students of Waterloo District, and, and others as well. And number two, congratulations to Mayor, Mayor Hart. And number three, I wish everyone quality time with their families, and others that need a family during Christmas break and the other holidays that Angela mentioned.
Thanks. I have no report tonight, other than I'm not going to re-echo everything that's already been said tonight, so yay. Our next meeting is in 2016, it is not until January 11th, so with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.